Called order, welcome everybody to the work session of August the 18th of 2023 of the Limestone County Commission. Under public comment, we have, and for the public comment, I have, how many we got signed in?
Just two.
Just tell you, okay. And anytime you want to make a public comment, you're more than welcome to email it into the county or call it in or whatever, because I know a lot of people can't come to the meetings. We go through this all the time and it's held to three minutes, but come, Mr. Adam Fox, if you don't mind, step up here.
Chairman, appreciate it. Thank you so much, commissioners, for allowing us to come this morning to speak. Here on behalf of the Prior Field Airport Authority, I wanted to formally present our appropriation request for FY24. Before you, you have a small packet of some documents to include our cover letter that we submitted before the deadline, a resolution by our chairman and the board, and then two documents outlining some projects. Essentially, this coming up year, we have, we've got four major projects. One of them, you are very much actively involved in, which is our sewer expansion project. We have three others that will bring about a tremendous change in diversifying our economy through the airport, creating aviation and aerospace-related jobs at Prior Field. We have two major horizontal projects, which would be a concrete project at the airport. Our northwest, which is going to be along Highway 31 and Garrett Road, that's your first document there. That project will support three hangar sites. Right now, we have LOIs from four different groups that are looking to build there. One of them, we're actively working with Limestone County Economic Development. These will bring about roughly 85 to 90 jobs and bring in new aircraft. The other project is the one that we've been talking about for quite some time. It was under the code name of Project FOX, Acquisition Integration, is going to be bringing in 250 new jobs on the southeast. We have to basically build out access to runway 36 for that company. They are roughly about 75% drawings right now. They're working with our engineer of record, Goodwin Mill Kaywood. So we'll be starting that project sometime, hopefully, the beginning of summer of next year. These are major projects. These are major developments. This is expanding the airport. How the airport sits today essentially is, we don't have room to capture these companies. So we're having to build new taxiways. We're having to build new infrastructure to support this growth. So roughly, if we look at numbers, we're looking at over 325 new, 325 new jobs coming to Limestone County specifically. One other thing that this comment, I guess it's kind of something that's not been talked about in our discussions, these are going to be bringing new aircraft. Currently, the airport is home to 141 based airplanes. This is number one in the state of Alabama as far as a general aviation airport. You know, these aircraft are paying taxes that, you know, it's just like a vehicle tax, your 1% tax, except for we're not talking about an $85,000 Chevy. We're talking about a multimillion dollar jet, a multimillion dollar turboprop. And of course, those taxes are significant at even 1%, especially when their value is, you know, north of $5 million. So these, these projects will allow us to get new aircraft, new jobs, new taxpayers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Mr. Kelly, if you don't mind, step up here, please.
Yes, sir.
You doing okay today?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
So just a couple of comments. I am the Rock House Landing H-08 president. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. So I'd like to talk to you about the B-Link, B-Linked Initiative that Governor Ivey has been talking about for the last past two years. Rock House Landing has approximately 39 homes in our subdivision and 15 adjacent communities that's near our subdivision. We have a problem with internet. The family members, we have young kids that's in high school, some is in kindergarten, grade school, and they're having to go to the parking lot McDonald's to get on the internet to do their homework. This is the problem that we had. Our community is basically devastated, especially when COVID-19 hit a community, the kids didn't have, when they went to homeschool and learning from, from home, we could not communicate at all. So we was kind of shuttling kids to the parking lot, Walmart, and anywhere else we can find internet, and that's where they were doing their homework in the hot sun, in their cars and sometimes vans and stuff like that. So, so we are devastated out there as far as internet. We contacted AT&amp;T down in Birmingham. They did a study and they determined that internet, high-speed internet is approximately four miles from our front gate of our subdivision. I have letters that I can turn over to the committee if you guys are interested in that, where they did their research study. They said, in order for them to start installing internet in our community, it would be approximately 15K to start the work and then 107,000 to go ahead and completely run internet to the foot of each homeowner's house. So again, I have the letters and the research. We contacted Huntsville about this. Mr. Meredith, talked to him about it, and he basically referred us back to, to this committee. Again, I have letters from the homeowners identifying the severity of their situation. Several of the members in our community work on rest on Arsenal, some work for NASA, and when we went to teleworking, again, they was devastated, could not go into the office, couldn't get internet in our subdivision. Again, even adults that work for NASA, some of the most important companies in the United States, we had to do teleworking from our cars. So that's the situation that we're in. I'd like to know if the commissioners, if you guys can do anything to help us out, where are we at on this initiative as far as B-Link that Governor Ivey talk about all the time? I mean, like I said, in 2021 is when I started this process, trying to figure out what could we do. Our community is willing to pay aid to construction. We'll do whatever we can do to support and help. I think that this would be a win-win situation for the commissioners, simply because we've done most of the research. We're talking about 125K to run high-speed internet to approximately 50 houses. So that'll be a win-win situation, say, hey, listen, we already carried our Governor's Ivy Initiative. We've tapped into one of the remote locations, and I think it's a simple process. So if you could help us out, we would greatly be appreciated. I have the document where I can forward the documents to you, and I would do that. Thank you so very much for your time.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, just get us all that information, and we're actually having, we had a meeting yesterday with some, with some internet people, so that would be good. We'll get that information passed on.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anybody else, Ellen?
Brian Jones.
Mr. Jones? How you doing, Brian?
Good morning. Good morning. Happy Friday. We're back to address the request from the DA's office to the money that's from the opioid settlement. You should have in front of you the Spartan Technology Report, refer to page seven. Basically, the first year operating costs are $54,760 with an annual recurring support of $12,200. Had a conversation with them this morning. They are going to amend this quote just a little bit. The county sheriff's department has gone to what's called Central Square, which is their software that manages all their cases. We're able to link this Spartan software to that, so that way, when the sheriff's department has a file, they can send it to us. We're asking that this be put on the agenda so we can get a vote on this, so I can sign the contract. The opioid money should be in, or a large portion of that is in. What we would like to do is, if we rewarded that money, we'll put it in a special account. That way, it sits separate from any of our other funds, and as the money is spent for this software, that way, there can be, you know, total accounting for it. We're kind of at a crossroads. You know, the, the last two grand juries, we've had problems. The previous grand jury, we had to shut down because the software shut down. The grand jury we just finished, we had to have fish come repeatedly because the software kept shutting down on us. And so we're kind of with the volume of cases that are coming through the door, we're kind of getting to a point where we're going to come to a grinding halt. And, you know, one of the things about this is, I'm not requesting money from the general fund. This is money that has been set aside from a lawsuit, you know, we call it drug money, but this is money that has been set aside from a lawsuit because of the opioid crisis. And one of the big things in this was the fact that there was no way to track what kind of cases we're trying. You know, you call me and say, well, how many fentanyl cases have you tried? Well, I can't tell you that. And that's what this new software will do, but it'll also manage the files, it will, it will stream on the discovery process, and hopefully speed some things up so we can spend more time trying jury trials and less time having to send stuff back and forth to the criminal defense lawyers. And so our request is to add it to the agenda so we can go ahead and get a vote on it and then let us sign it.
Well, I got a couple of questions. One is, you know, we'd have to have, if we did any kind of contract or whatever, we'd have to go through the attorney and let him look at, view anything we're going into in a contract. But the second thing is, is, I mean, this question, I mean, this is a question I'd like to have with you and the sheriff. Why would we not go with Central Square, you know, I mean, if you could be, you know, if that's what they're, I mean, why, why would we just go with that service to add on, I mean, just piggyback off of that service?
Right. And Central Square does something different. It's the way their management of their files, it's where they store their videos, their photographs, things like that. This is actually a case management software that does the grand jury process, does the indictments, it manages the discovery, because one of the things is that there's things on the sheriff's server that you don't want to give the criminal defense lawyers access to. It's not discoverable. And what this does is this creates a portal, so when we have a case that's ready for trial, the defense lawyers can log into it, they can, and get their discovery, but it also creates an imprint, so we know when they did it. Because one of the things that we're running into is the lawyers, like, well, I didn't get that in discovery, and right in the middle of the trial, and we have to stop and we have to disprove the fact, you know, like Mason Sisk. You know, Mason Sisk, there was 800 exhibits, and we're having to fight back and forth, did you produce it? Did they get it? And that's what this software does, in addition to running all the computer programs and things for the office.
Okay. Well, that was just a question I had.
Yeah.
But I'd like to sit down and we'll talk about it. Just come in and we'll sit down and talk about it and see if we can go forward with this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Thomas Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell? How you doing today?
My name is Thomas S. Mitchell. I'm a longtime resident of Limestone County, been here all my life. I'm the owner of Athens Land Surveying Company. I've been surveying in Athens since 1988. I've done hundreds of minor subdivisions. Most of tracks are less than 20 acres, being divided into five or six tracks by long-term owners, wanting to get a little cash out of the property they've been making payments on for years. The new subdivision regulations will seriously hurt the small property owner because it will greatly restrict their ability to market and sell their property. The new regulations seem to be predicated on maintaining safe stopping distance between driveways. I've done several site distance surveys through the years to confirm if property has safe stopping distance, and maybe don't. They require property to have the same site distance between driveways on a long stretch of open highway than you require property under a hill or around a blind curve that's not inland with common practice. Presently, Lauderdale, Morgan, Lawrence, and Jackson Counties have no such restrictions. The new regulation seems to be modeled after Madison County. Can drive through Madison County see the effects of this, of this regulation? Dozens, if not hundreds, of houses lined up in neat rows 20 feet apart, which is how developers maximize their profit. Property that is flat and is worth, and worth more can support these large developments. Much of Limestone County is not so flat or valuable and will not support the high development cost of a major subdivision. The only option that many property owners have is to cut tracks off an existing highway. As for safety concerns, I don't think the accident statistics will indicate that driving in Madison County is safer than surrounding counties. Some people are against the subdivision development altogether, but I think if they had 20 or 30 acres of good road fundage, which represented a way to put a little money in the bank, pay off some bills, or maybe give their grandchildren a little bit, they would change their mind. I respectfully ask that you both know this regulation and not restrict the property owners of Limestone County's ability to market and sell their property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Bye.
No further comments.
All right. Thank y'all. Thank everybody for coming in. All right. Moving forward, on the agenda for today, we'll have the minutes from August the 7th of 2023. Anybody got a discussion with anything on the minutes?
No, sir.
All right. Next thing on air, we'll have claims in the amount of $1,709,859.29. Anybody got any, any dispute or any thought with the claim? All right. Public hearings, we'll have none, but for the record, I will go ahead and announce this, September the 5th, we will have a public hearing on the subdivision regulations and its proposed regulations. We're taking all advisements, so we'll be taking comments from now until then. You're welcome to come in and sit down and talk with me and Mark. I know that there was a meeting the other night. We'll be glad to come out and listen to any compliments we have. I know that we're held, we're, so September the 5th, it will be a public hearing, but between now and September 5th, you are more than welcome to come in, call us or whatever, and we will be glad to listen. I know I talked to Mr. Mitchell yesterday on the phone, talked with several people on the phone yesterday, so I mean, it was, you're welcome to come in anytime. So I just wanted to make that announcement for the public hearing. Resolutions and orders, contracts, agreements, grants, and MOUs. Anybody got any discussion, anything else on the public comment without announcing?
No, sir.
All right. I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to cut y'all out if y'all had a comment, so. Anyhow, contracts, agreements, and grants. First on here, we'll approve a contract with Ms. Helen Carter to provide services for an interim director at the counseling agent. This is, as we know, wishes to get our counseling agent started back, so has anybody got any discussion with Ms. Helen or any issues with that?
So I guess offers we made, they didn't accept the offer?
They didn't accept the offer. We made an offer and they did not accept, so we, we're just going with a contract to, for Ms. Helen.
How long's my contract?
Up to six months.
Up to, so?
Up to six months.
Up to six months.
Yeah. And what we're going to do is, is she's going to come in and get everything going, and we'll interview again, take applications. We just need to get a director down there, so.
Okay.
So she'll be an interim director for six months.
Ms. Carter's a good choice.
She is. She actually came back and done this same service back several years ago when Emily Haney's husband was sick. When he was sick, she actually came back and provided this same service at that time and filled in then. So she was retired calculated director.
And she serves on several boards, I think, now, is that correct?
Yeah, she's on, she's involved in everything in Limestone County, I guess.
There won't be a conflict with the board she serves on?
No, no, it won't be a conflict with nothing. She is, so that will be, that will be a contract with her. Anybody got any discussion, any more issues with that? All right. Moving on, number two, approve to participate in a state and local cybersecurity grant program, which will be administrated through the state of Alabama's Office of Information and Technology to improve the security of cyber infrastructure and resilience of the service, which is the county provides to the commission, to the community. Approval of this participation would include the authorization for the chairman to sign any necessary forms and agreements for a grant, for the same. Anybody got a discussion with that?
No, sir.
All right. Number three on here will be to approve to accept the emergency management performance grant. This is state subward in the amount of 200, I mean, $2,266. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Number four will be to approve an MOU between the Family Life Center and the Limestone County Commission for the services period beginning October the 1st of 2023 through September the 30th of 2024. This is just something we approve every year. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Number five will be to approve an application for a rule, surface transportation grant. This is a 20% match. Anybody got a discussion with that?
Is that for any specific purpose?
Drew can probably alleviate to that.
For any specific purpose?
We, we don't have one yet, and this is a, this is a grant that's due on Monday, and it's questionable as to whether we're going to actually apply for it, but we wanted authorization in order to, to be able to do so if we clearly identify a need, and right now, it's looking probably like we won't. So this is just a contingency.
Yep. Most grants, you know, you have to have approval just to apply for it.
That's right.
This is just to apply for it. All right. Number six will be to approve an application for a justice grant. This is a 0% match. Anybody got a discussion with that grant? All right.
Need more like it.
Yeah, 0% match, and I know the sheriff would be happy with that, wouldn't you, there? Yeah, that's good, there. Anyways, any more discussion with that? Budget revisions, we have none. Emergency purchases, we have none. Board appointments, we have none. Award of bids, we have to award a bid. This is a, be approved to award financing to First National Bank for the financing of two Kenworth T-880 garbage trucks and one freight liner, model number M2-106 garbage truck. And this is for a 60-month term, and the loan payments and principal interest with an interest rate in this beginning, this be, interest rate being 4.63. They were the lowest awarded interest rate. Anybody got a discussion with that? And this is for three, this way we can turn three of the rentals back in, and you know, we have been renting some garbage trucks. So three will go back after we get these three in. And I think we actually may have got one of them yesterday, did we?
I was not informed that we were. I know, I know, I know we were trying.
I don't know if they ever did or not. I know they were.
But I, I didn't know.
Do you know when we're getting some of, some of the other ones? Do you know when we're getting some of the other ones?
The other two are about two, three weeks out.
Yeah. One of them is actually sitting on the yard indicator.
Okay.
The, the freight liner is, right?
Yes, okay.
The other two will be here two or three weeks. All right. Any more discussion with any garbage truck? All right. Be to approve to sell the following, I mean, to award the following bid. This is for licensed department. This is for envelopes, and this will be $562.50 with an additional pages being of 9 cents. Anybody got a discussion with that? Personnel, policy staffing and actions. Number one will be to approve to hire James Kendrick Atkinson, Sr., as a part-time court security officer. This will be effective 8/21/23, and that's pending a drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with him? All right. Number two will be to approve to amend the staffing plan. This is in District 3, and this will to reflect that he will have four equipment operator threes, one equipment operator two, and one equipment operator one. So then I know he's just swapping some positions around. You got any discussion with that? All right. Okay. Number three will be to approve to hire Tina Martin as a help desk clerk in the license commission office. Anybody got a discussion with her? All right. Married increases, we have a couple listed on here. Anybody got any discussion with either married increase? All right. Engineers report, I'll turn it over to Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three subdivisions for your consideration today. We have the Point Edition 4. This is a replata lot 34. This is a minor for preliminary and final affecting one lot in District 3. We have Caroline Hills Mini Farm Subdivision. This is a replata of Track 2. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots from that tract in District 3. And Seth Smith Subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District 3. Y'all have any questions about any of those?
I don't.
Okay. We haven't, we've sent out letters, we haven't received any comments. We have, we also have the transportation plan, the Rebuild Alabama Transportation Plan. We've included that in your packet. We're presenting Oak Grove Road, Nick Davis Road, Pepper Road, Blackburn Road, and Crosskey Road for next year's Rebuild Alabama funds. So I think that our office has been, Hunter's been reaching out to y'all, just to make sure that that was right, but if there's anything that, that you see that we need to adjust, let me know. And then our herbicide, I know that we presented in our budget, we presented the, an option for herbicide that would be doing that in-house instead of by contract. So I just wanted to, I know that there's been some discussion, so I just want to make sure that, to see if you guys had any questions or, or comments or concerns, want to make sure we're going in the right direction as far as budgeting and those kinds of things. So just want to provide an opportunity for discussion for that.
I'm well open to it. I'm all for it.
Yeah. For some reason, $46,000 comes to mind. Is that about what they charge us to spray?
No, it's, it's, it's almost $100,000 at the contract, we pay the contractor to spray.
For both, for two sprays? So $5,000 each?
So, yeah, that's, and like I said, we were, we were looking at possibly bringing that in. I just want to make sure that we, we were going in the right path as far as budget, as far as budgeting goes, yeah. Chemicals not included in that cost.
Did you ever get a price on a truck?
The truck is, the truck is 190 to 200,000 for a, a new, new truck, and so I, and I originally, I think, asked in the budget for 220, because we were working on getting the price, but we do have a, a price now, so.
And the, the other truck doesn't need anything? I mean, it's good?
The what?
The, the truck that we own, it's good?
The other truck is, the other truck can, we've been using it and we can continue to use it. It was the better of the two when we originally made the switch to the, to the contract, so we'd continue to use it, but we were in a position where we're either going to have to buy a truck then or switch to a contract, and so we, we had made the decision to work with a contractor, but that, we, we haven't. When you're, when a contractor's scheduling doesn't quite line up and give us the best product, so, so we're, like I said, this is just an option to try to give us more ability to, to coordinate with the mowing schedule and all those kinds of things, so. But like I said, just want to make sure that we were on the right track when it comes to budgeting.
We just have one licensed applicator?
We have, we have, we have two licensed applicators.
Two, okay.
Yes, sir.
And there's actually some other ones in the county that have, I know District 1 has an employee that used to drive one of them.
We have two that, that actively do that work.
We have the staffing for that, we have to add somebody.
We, that in our, in our proposed budget would be to hire two operator ones, and then our current licensed applicators dedicate them to herbicide and sign work, and then flagging and, and things like that, but it would be to actually hire two operator one positions for the paving crew, to take, take that personnel out of the paving crew.
So in the winter, they'll make it actually work in the district, need them too, I guess, probably, help out some.
The goal, the goal would be that they're going to be available to, to assist with striping, assist with pavement markers, assist with signage, just, I mean, assist with a multitude of things, so we'll be able to do what we, whatever we need to do, just like we normally do in our.
The two guys that are certified now do the signs now?
Yes, yes, yeah. Currently, they do, and like I said, what we, what we've run into is, is when we do our herbicide, we, we actually lose that personnel in the paving crew, which puts the paving crew at a disadvantage, so we try to consolidate that to a shorter period of time as we can to, and like I said, that doesn't give us the ability to, to work with y'all's mowing schedule and coordinate with the mowing schedule, so we really need to kind of somewhat detach that, that, that personnel from the paving crew so that, so that it doesn't hinder a paving program.
And for the side of the right, you know, for the, for the record now, they already do sign work, and if somebody knocked a stop sign down or anything, by law, you know, if we get a call, we've got to go put it up, so they have to quit, they had to quit what they're doing, and so I mean, as far as going, it's pretty much every day, we get a request of a sign knocked down or a nameplate missing, and they have a list of stuff that they just maintenance, that they have to do all the time, too, so. I mean, it is, and I will say this, coming from an agriculture background, spraying is timing. You know, I mean, and I mean, that's just, and that's, that's the, I think that's the biggest issue we've run into with a contractor is, is timing. You know, it's just a, you know, if you two or three days late, you, you're behind the ball, of course, you know.
What was the reason before they went to contract?
We had a, like I said, we had a truck go down, we were going to have to buy a new truck, and then we were running into these same personnel issues with our paving program kind of increasing pace and those kinds of things. We're running into the same personnel issues, so we, we felt like for the money of the, having to hire the additional personnel, we could, we could pay for a contractor. And like I said, it, we, we have done that, and, and the herbicides do go out, but they And like I said, it, we, we have done that, and, and the herbicides do go out, but they don't necessarily go out at the right time. And so, uh, that's, that's the thing. We can continue to do it with contract. The herbicides do go out. They, but, but, um, if we, if we want the ability to kind of coordinate and, and look at a full vegetation management plan, we still have the issue with not having a truck and really needing the additional personnel to be able to do that. So that's why I presented that. It's pretty much the same thing I presented back when we originally decided to go with a contractor. We just kind of have these two options. So, I mean, like I said, if, if, um, I mean, like I said, we, the, the two options are we can continue what we're doing or we, we could do this. But, um, but like I said, we're just trying to make sure that we're on the right track when it comes to budgeting.
On the certifications, how hard are those to get?
Um, it's, it's a test. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a fairly difficult test, um, for roadside application because of all the, because of all the things that it encompasses. Um, so, but, um, it, it, it's doable. I mean, by, 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 about anybody, but it does take some effort.
Lake and, um, Drew, Doug are our two right now.
I was just thinking about for the future, if they decide not to.
Yeah, and we've had some conversations about that. And so we're, um,
We're, we're actually doing some herbicide applications now.
Yes.
Some, I mean, we, we actually still do some places that they can't get to or something like that. We still spray the walking tracks and things like that.
So we still are in the herbicide business, just, it's not as, um,
And that's, yeah, it's not as aggressive, I mean, as far as county personnel.
And I know that, you know, this year's been a really stuffed track, you know, because of, I know District One, they didn't get to spray it till later, and it was, you know, he has had a real issue with some, and I think you've had some issues, too.
Yeah, there's no coordination to it. There's nothing.
I mean, one of the biggest issues that we've run into is, is we can't get the data of where they've sprayed until a couple of weeks after they leave. And so the timing and things, for y'all to be able to make decisions on where to send your, send your bushhogs or things like that. I know there's been times where they sprayed and the next day you guys came through with a bush hog. Well, that really didn't do any good. That's, that application, they didn't take. So, so just trying to be able to have that coordination. That, that was, that was the ultimate goal.
And I tell you, Will, a thing I will say, and this is from my experience growing up, I think a pre-emerge program is gonna be our better option. That's my opinion.
Right.
But anyways, any more discussion?
Um, I, I, like I've been doing the last several times, I like to touch on the subdivision regulations. Um, I have, over the last couple of weeks, had a lot of really good comments and, um, and a lot of, a lot of feedback. I know that, I know that what I presented is, and I, and I said it from the beginning, what I presented would, um, may not be perfect, but I had to start somewhere. So I appreciate all the feedback, and, um, I am working on, um, I'm working on some revisions to what was presented based on that feedback, um, and I hope to have something to kind of present to you guys, um, as far as potential revisions for reconsider. And so we're, we are working through it and trying to make revisions to, to make something that, that makes sense. So we do, I mean, we, we do have some issues with site distance. We do have those kinds of things that are unintended consequences, and we're just trying to, try to, trying to figure out a way that makes, that makes sense for everybody involved. And so I, I really do appreciate the comments that we've received, and I, and I look forward to more comments and being able to discuss and just make sure that we have something that makes sense. I want to thank everybody that, that's reached out and been involved.
Anybody got anything else?
Speaking on that right there, I don't know. I've got several phone calls. I don't know how many phone calls y'all have got. I think the, the biggest concern, Mark, and I think you know, is the one, the minor.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, I don't think, is it, I mean, has anybody got anything on the major stuff? I haven't, I mean?
I, I received a few comments from some engineers on the major, um, and so there is a, a, a revision, uh, there that, that makes sense. And then I think, uh, we did have a comment on, um, on like new entrance roads, uh, we received, and I, I'm looking at that. And, but yes, that by far, the majority have been on the minor. And so I'm trying to, to, to come up with, uh, something that, that, that hel, that helps there. That, um, cause I think, I think the biggest thing is the, the table that I had put out there. That's what I've received the, the most comment on. So, um, so I'm, like I said, I'm trying to take some of that feedback and, and, uh, create a, create a revision that, that kind of does away with that table and, um,
Yeah. Well, I mean, I know we want to get these subdivision regulations out there. I think everybody, when we need them, um, subdivisions are going up left and right. We just approved some today or whatever. So, I mean, what's the likelihood of us just removing that altogether and just trying to see what we can do from there and, and get that, let's get the subdivision regulations done on the majors.
Um, that's, that's up to you guys. I mean, we can talk about it, but, um, like I said, I'm trying to, I'm dying trying to put a revision, um, that, I'm trying to put a revision together for your consideration. So let, let me do that, and then, um, that way you have something that you have your hands to see.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else? And like I said, I know, and I will say this, touching on subdivision, I've reached, I've had several calls reached out to me every which way. I've been, I mean, everywhere, I mean, everything in the world, I've been, I mean, I'm not gonna get into conversations I've had, but I mean, I've had good and bad conversations. But this is not, this was a provision that was put out there that we've talked about for two years. The engineer has, I know with several commissioners, we've talked about this for a long time, subdivision regulations. And one of the main issues we have is, and I rode around this morning, and I didn't sleep none last night, riding around thinking about this. And, um, you can ride around this county, and there's cars that actually park in the county right of way because the drive, houses are close to the road. And I mean, we've got to figure that out. I mean, we've got to figure out how we can be a, and I'm not a, I mean, my grandfather ran over a lady walking in the mailbox and killed her. I mean, you know, I mean, it's the thing is, you know, we got to look at a safety issue. This is mainly, to me, this is mainly a safety issue. And, um, I just wanted to, I mean, I'm looking at the safety side of it. So I mean, it's, uh, you know, we've got to figure that, and, and I'm not gonna call off named road, but there's roads in this county that are pickpath roads that are twelve feet wide. It was a farm-to-market road that has had, that we've sold off lots and they built houses on. Now we need to widen that road a whole lane. And we can't widen it because of the, the houses. I mean, we, you know, and I mean, that's what I, that's the issues that, I know that I get calls, North Wales Road, I got a call in it the other day, you know, how, you know, we need to widen that road. You got the school bus has to get off in a ditch to get around. I mean, we've got to figure out how we can, how we can manage this together. So that's just my thoughts, um.
You're right.
And I mean, that's, I mean, and like I said, I know that, that people understand, and I mean, and, and that people say, well, we don't need roads, we only this. But I mean, and, and the sheriff, how many calls you get people leaving stuff in the right of way? I mean, bunches. He gets hundreds of calls. Me and him talked about it yesterday on the phone. Hundreds. And like I said, I mean, people build houses and they'll deliver trusses, and the trusses will be hanging out to the corner of the head to the right of way. I mean, that's, that's something we've got to figure out. Um, but anyways. And like I said, that's just, I mean, it's a safety issue, and I'm, and I'm not advocating either way or another. I'm just saying that, that's the stance that, that I, you know, feel about things. So, but anyways, moving on. Anybody guys, they got any comments? All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, I do got one. I want to thank Mark. I know, Mark, we, we've buddied heads a few times on this, and I want to thank you because I mean, you have, you've had an open door, and I've went in there several times and talked to you. I mean, like I said, me and you've buddied heads a little bit on this whole thing.
You're, you're right.
And, and you know, and I've been passionate, you've been passionate, and, uh, but I want to tell you thank you for, you know, and, and being open-minded. But, you know, I want you to really think about what I, what I said. I mean, you know how I felt about that.
I, I do. And, and we can, and like I said, we can talk further. I hope you, um, like I said, I, I am working on some revisions. I have taken the comment, and, and like I said, and I know that there are things that, um, that I had, that I had in there that I think were unintended consequences, that, that I, I just, well, I wasn't aware of, and I'm, and I appreciate everybody making the comments to, to bring that to my attention before something, before something got out there that, that really wasn't workable. So, like I said, so I am, I, I'm working on, on trying to create, uh, a, a revision that, and so, like I said, I, I'll, I'll make sure that you guys have, have copies of that. And like I said, it's, it's, it's all for your consideration.
And like I said, this is something that's consideration, it's something we're looking at, and, and I know that, um, hey, I, I've heard everything in the world, but I mean, my deal is, I've had several conversations with several people on the phone, and most people, when I talk to them, I tell them my concern, they understand my concern, and they don't, and I, and I, I'm, I mean, I'll agree. I don't particularly like Mark, and I didn't lie, but Mark knows that. I mean, we talked about it. I mean, and, um, you know, but, you know, I mean, my, I, I made my suggestion. I mean, he's got my suggestion. He, I mean, he can get y'all's suggestion, and get everybody's suggestion, and we can go from there. And people in the audience, I mean, we're welcoming all kinds of suggestions. So anyhow, moving on. Anybody else got anything else? Anybody got a comment?
All right, move on, man.
All right, move on. Well, that's what we're here for. Y'all always talk about wanting to have a great work session. We having a great work session.
We're going in circles.
Oh, yeah? All righty. So your comment is to move on?
I'm good.
You move on. Okay. All right. Um, other business, um, will be to approve to sell the three items on GovDeals, and I'll, I'll speed up a little bit because I don't have time. But, um, anyways, three items listed below. Anybody got any discussion with any of the three? All right. And we hired a new lady in the little office there to kind of help with Emily, and this has been her job, is to go through the inventory. And Lord, she's been busy. So y'all see all this stuff that was on the inventory list. Stephanie has done an amazing job. She has went through and stuff that was been on inventory for years or damaged or something like that, needed to be removed from inventory, that we were still inventorying every year. This is the list. I'm not gonna read through it, but if anybody has any issues with anything on this list, please let me know. But that is what Stephanie has been doing. So y'all can see she's been busy. So, and approve to transfer the following items, and there's three items listed below. This is just a normal transfer from one department to the other. Anybody got a discussion with anyone? All right. And, uh, well, there's several, it's more than other page here. And number four, this is a conversation I'm gonna have right quick. Uh, when Buc-E's came here, you know, we've talked about, they gave fifteen thousand dollars, gonna give it back to the community. And, you know, I decided I would let the four commissioners, you know, we, we've talked about what to do with this. So, um, listed below, um, each one of them have had, you know, they've got thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars piece they can give to organizations. And, you know, um, it's listed on here, um, Foundation A on Aging and Makeaway Foundation Commissioner, um, Samit split his, eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars piece. Um, Commissioner Barxel said thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars to East Limestone Fire Department. Um, Mr. Commissioner Gatlin said he wanted to give his to the Public Safety Academy at the Career Tech, and, um, four H's from, um, Mr. Commissioner Townsend. Anybody got any discussion with that? And I want to thank all of y'all. These are great programs. And next year, maybe we can look around and give it to other programs.
They are. They're great. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for throwing yours in, making it a little bigger there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, my deal was, I mean, I know that a lot of times y'all don't get to do things, you know, because being, you know, and I wanted y'all to have a chance to, to do what y'all felt you'll do with it, so. Anyhow, anybody got a discussion? I want to thank all of y'all for looking into these and, and supporting these groups.
And thanks to Buc-E's.
And thanks to Buc-E's. That's the main thing, and, um, this wouldn't happen if it wasn't for them, so.
Yes, sir.
This is nothing county money. This is something that they give us with us to give away. So, so, good deal. And, um, number five, um, as y'all know, we have, um, we're, we're a short lady at the Archives Building, and, um, we've got one lady working there right now. We're fixing to go through that process of, of, of rehiring, redoing. But until further notice, um, the Archives, you know, with the lady working there and her having eaten a lunch break and stuff, we're gonna close the Archives from twelve to one every day. It's been announced, um, it'll be, lunch hour will be closed for that. And I know Drew went up and met with us the other day and Ellen, and that was the best scenario because we don't, she's only there by herself, and that would give her a, a lunch hour, and the business will be open back up at one to four-thirty. So hours will be set until we get somebody going.
And y'all finna start that process?
Yeah, we're finna start that process, but you know how it goes, you know, if you take applications, and then we, I know we went through this with the council agent. That's why we, you know, we go through, if you take, uh, take applications, and then you interview, and then you go through somebody wanting to turn in a notice, and it could be a month before we get in, going anywhere. And, uh, and I mean, um, April has been really, really good to work with, and really good to deal with, and she's doing a really good job. But we just didn't, you know, it's not fair for her not to get to take a lunch break every day, so. And we, you know, we were sending somebody up to take her place every day at lunch, but, you know, it's just, we think this is the best option for the moment, so. Uh, we have no executive session, and we recess for fifteen minutes, and I know I've rattled, so we'll be, um, we'll come back at, um, nine fifty-five, nine fifty-five. There we go.